Johnson, Melton.
Yeah, here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, as we gather here today, I am filled with a sense of hope and determination. Our community faces challenges, but together we have the power to overcome them. Today, I would want to emphasize the importance of unity and economic development, especially in our underserved communities. We must stand together, hand in hand, to lift every corner of our city, ensuring that prosperity reaches every doorstep. It's not just about growth, it's about inclusive growth, where no one is left behind. Let's work together to build a brighter future for all. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your remarks on our many different items. Before we get started, I wanted to mention a loss to the community that frequently was involved in city hall and city matters. Bob Huck, a longtime development attorney in town, passed away, and we're thinking about him and his family, and know that there's a visitation Thursday night and services on Friday for those that would like to participate. And then councilmembers, without objection, what we want to do today is move up item number 80 off the supplemental agenda to take that first, that being a storm-related item. And we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the seriousness of that storm over the weekend and the tragedy that's presented to many families in our community, but also many other communities. Very fortunate not to have any fatalities here in Omaha, but that was not the case in some other communities, including Minden, Iowa. So, a very serious matter that we'll talk about here more in a few minutes with number 80. And then following number 80, we'll take up without objection number 43, dealing with funding for the PACE program, with the mayor intending to provide some remarks before she gets on with her schedule today. So, Madam Clerk, please bring up number 80.
Item 80, a resolution to approve a waiver of permit fees for properties damaged or destroyed by the severe weather on April 26.
Public hearing and vote on number 80 is today. We'll first hear from a presentation from the planning department. Mr. Fenslaw, if you would, provide a little overview of this item and what it does. And then we'll hear from proponents and opponents, and then we'll have some councilmember remarks, too.
Yeah, good afternoon, Dave Fenslaw. So, my department for the last 96 hours has been fully involved in storm cleanup, coordination of building permits. I've had a number of inspectors, all the chiefs, building superintendent, and a number of inspectors have been out on the ground, helping assess the damage. So, you all know that Councilman Harding brought this resolution to the council today. What the plan is, if it's passed, and I'm pretty sure it's going to be, is we're going to exempt building permit fees for the damaged areas. And we have a very good presentation, Mike Shonlaw from Douglas County GIS is here to show you that today. We intend to waive building permit fees for anybody who received damage during the storm. A little update on that, what Mike will show you will be a lot of the 2-on-1 call-ins and reports of the damage. But as of about a couple hours ago, the path that you'll see on this map, all of those parcels have already been noted in GIS. So, if today somebody pulls a building permit, it will not charge them a fee. So, there's going to be a number of permits probably for each parcel, depending on what was destroyed and what needs to be fixed. We're equipped to do that, we're going to track that, and we're going to do the best we can to help out the people who are in distress right now. So, I'll turn it over to Mike. If you have any questions of me, I'll be up back, or I can come back up front. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Mike Shonlaw, Douglas County GIS Department. I'm going to give you just a quick overview of some of the data that's been collected that both the Omaha Planning Department and actually many other city and county departments are using. If you can see on this map, this kind of quantifies the damage that's out there. As you can see, over 834 structures have been recorded as damaged so far. A lot of those are residential homes. We've got, the city's got inspectors out there, they're volunteers with the County Emergency Management Agency out in the field now, doing detailed inspections of these areas to try to determine if there are any other areas that need to be looked at. And as you can see, just from the volume, this is the path of damage in the blue outline here that we incurred across the county and through the city. Quite a bit of damage. One of the things I want to show you is some photos, before-after photos, that are pretty amazing. This is one of the neighborhoods out near northwest of 204th and Maple. And I just want to show you some examples. If you look on the right, I'll take that house right in the top with the pool, and you can see what happened as a result of the damage. And so, this gives you a really good idea of the kind of destruction that's out there and the amazing cleanup efforts and response efforts that have been in place. So, this viewer is accessible right now to all the city and county departments involved in this response. The data is coming in, we're trying to make sure that data is as clean as possible as it gets put in here. So, the numbers are live, they're updating as we go. Almost 2,000 inspections and reports so far, and I think that'll continue over the next few days. With, as you can see, some numbers over here on the right. Most of those, many of those inspections fall within Omaha's development jurisdiction or within city limits itself. So, there's definitely a lot of activity happening there. And as Dave mentioned, I'm sure there'll be a lot of rebuilding activity coming up. And so, this application here also has some other tools in it for people to view. We've got drone imagery that was captured on Saturday, right after the storm. We're in the process of adding drone imagery from the Omaha Police Department. We also have imagery that was captured by a vendor of the entire area. So, we'll have fresh photos to look at before and after. But these are some of the neighborhood's most hardest hit out in the western part of the city. So, with that, any questions?
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have some. Shall we proceed with public hearing and come to councilmember questions?
I was hoping if you could show, too, when you click on, if you wanted to do that, if you needed an exact address, or just to show that not only, you know, the inventory and the condition report of each property that he's got on this map is kind of extraordinary.
Yeah, there are a lot of damaged photos. So, each individual property is being inspected, or property owners have reported these issues and sent in photos themselves. But you can see, obviously, there's ground level, in addition to the drone imagery and those types of things, there's a lot of ground-level photography of this damage. So, very well documented, and we're really thankful that a lot of folks have helped and, you know, report this data to us. And it's really going to help, I think, the city and county move forward with this.
Great. Stay close, I think we'll have some follow-ups for you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, sorry, an opponent?
Yes, sir. Police team manage 2709 Dew Avenue. I am opposing this because I don't think the assistance goes far enough with your work. I don't know if this is it today, this is on the agenda, but are you going to be continually supporting the area that has been destroyed? And as you're doing it, you're doing it thoughtfully. I think maybe if you waive the fees for this, that makes sense. But we need to have appropriate reporting of the reconstruction because city codes and the work that went behind it, it's probably what saved lives. And so, I'd like to have clear information as to what the city can do for the destroyed area. I think I would also like to know, long-term, like, do you want to stimulate the area? And we're going to hear more about it, I'm sure. But just as a matter of wanting to talk to you today, I think that this doesn't go far enough to support the zone of destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Ford Momarts Brown, 1511 Farnham. I'm opposing this because, as Louise, I don't think it goes far enough. The way the insurance industry works is these people who have been victimized by the damage are not going to be able to get reinsured after this is paid for. The insurance companies will get reinsured by their insurers, but their insurers, insurers will not be able to get their insurance policies renewed. So, they're going to be stuck through an act of God into not being able to get reinsured. And I think that their coverage needs to be extended for two, three years. There are insurers, insurers out there that will cover their insurers. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to complicate that, but I have a limited vocabulary in that industry. And I think that they need to be taken care of beyond what their suraties will care for. And I think that needs to be looked at before it becomes a problem. I've just given you a heads-up, I've dealt with these situations before. There was, when I was living in Cedar Creek, and when I was in South Omaha a few years back, and I was working for Ford Credit after we had a terrific hailstorm. I mean, hail balls this size. People could not get hail insurance after that storm. And it, no fault of their own, but car insurers canceled their policies across eastern Nebraska. And that situation is going to come up here, and those people are going to need help. None of them are wealthy. Well, the ones in far west Omaha might be. But they're still going to need help getting their insurance renewed and extended. And not all of them are in west Omaha. Some of them just aren't going to be able to afford the outrageous fees for reinsuring and extending their policy. So, a heads-up that that situation is coming, and that need is going to be there. Thank you for your time.
Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, that's okay. I think I appreciate you going through that. I was, actually, we had a committee meeting in planning this morning, and Director Fenslaw brought this up. And it's amazing to think that, you know, just a few, 96 or so hours ago, when we were impacted by the storm and the amount of information and collaboration between not only governmental entities, but nonprofits, and just the citizenry. I mean, it's been absolutely incredible, the response. And I see Councilmember Melton's light is on after me. I'll let her, she does it much more eloquently, or she did in pre-council, so I'm anticipating what she's going to say. But as it relates to this resolution, we as a council have limited powers, if you will, or abilities to take some actions in this regard. And certainly, one of those is, in an event like this, whether it be fire, flood, or tornado, or a natural disaster, one of the things that we can do is vote as a council to eliminate the permitting fees that normally would be associated with the work that's going to be done, or have to be done in order for these people to get their lives back together. We, I wish we had a magic wand that we could do a lot more, we don't. But this is something that we can do as a council, and immediately, so that we can give those people who've been affected by this, that ability. But one of the things, I've heard a little misinformation that I wanted to make sure that I corrected, is we are not waiving the process to issue permits. We are just waiving the fees associated with those permits. And the system that you just demonstrated to us, it'll make it very easy for tracking purposes when permits are being applied for. You'll be able to, because of this mapping, we'll be able to pinpoint each parcel and know that that parcel was in the affected area. One of the things that we also talked about in our committee meeting, as well as at pre-council, is to make sure, or ask the question, that the amount, the dollar amount of the fees that we are waiving, if those go toward the expenses that we can report for federal assistance. And I think, I believe the planning department, finance department, or if they haven't already figured out what the answer is, will be soon. But I would anticipate it would be. And this is, again, part of the process, so that we can apply for and receive some federal assistance in disaster cleanup. So, on Friday night, when, you know, the storm probably was barely through, and FIRE had already established their command center, and police had already established their command center at St. Pat's out in Elkhorn. Actually, the mayor was the one who made sure that we were aware of this resolution that we can pass. So, I appreciate the mayor making that, making sure that we knew that. We've used it in the past during the floods and certainly in other circumstances. But nothing new to what we're trying to do here today. It is just something that we're trying to make sure that is on the books and we can get in process immediately. So, I was with councilmembers Rowe and Melton. We're doing a Costco run for some of those first responders and when this came up. So, that's why the three of us have asked for this to be on our agenda today. And I assume, I'll assume all the rest of the council, if they would have been in the car, too, which I guess we would have been violating open meeting rules, but I'm sure they would have been, they would have been of the same mind to put their names on, too. So, I'll ask the council to support this resolution. And as I said at the outset, I wish we could be doing more in this regard right away, but it is part of the process, and we will be doing more as we make applications for further assistance as well, too.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. Yes, this is just, this is one thing that we are doing and that we were able to do right away. I know that, I mean, the mayor was in contact with the councilmembers when it was still raining. I mean, the attorneys had just touched down. And in fact, I was actually under the overpass of Dodge while sitting, waiting for the hail to pass, and was in communication with the mayor's office, the departments, with Councilman Harding, Councilmember Rowe. The response from the city, I have to say, when they say, "Well, you need to do more", I want to say all the departments responded and responded immediately. It was amazing to see how quickly common ground got up and running. When we say we need to do more, I agree, that's something different. But I also want to commend what we've already done because the response from not just the city departments, Matt Kalsovich of Parks, from Public Works, I mean, working all weekend to try and get, we even had Jim Dowding of our own staff was on the phone with Waste Management FCC, trying to organize, you know, what do you need and how can I help? And it was a lot of phone calls. But the response even from the community, from Hy-Vee, getting seven trailers of supplies out with a disaster semi to relevant church, relevant center, became really just the hub where everybody could go. So, we had over 1,000 volunteers out on Saturday morning by 7:30. You had Lowe's donating chainsaws to people. You had Bright Ideas opened their entire parking lot and building up as a command center for Salvation Army. And when I was out there, there was just a stream of cars, of citizens of Omaha that care, that were dropping off donations. And then there were cars like mine, who I was getting calls from people saying, "This is what we need, this is what the volunteers need." So, then I'd go with my empty car, and the people from Salvation Army and Bright Ideas would fill it up with the needs of those that were impacted. I just, I want to say that I've never been so heartbroken for members of our community from what I saw this weekend, but I've also never been so proud of our city, of the departments, and of the people, the citizens of Omaha, who weren't just staying in Omaha. They were going out to Waterloo, they were going out to Blair, they were going out to Bennington. So, I think, yes, this seems like it's something small that we're doing today, but it's the one thing that we can do to waive those permitting fees and be able to do it very easily. This is an amazing system. And again, also, the partnership with the county. I didn't mention Commissioner Friend, who was out there on the ground, who immediately was on the phone when the landfill was trying to charge volunteers for dropping things off. My friend, and I think Don Rowe, actually drove to the landfill and made sure that they got that turned around. So, I appreciate all the work that you've done. It's only Tuesday, and you already have all of this in there. So, I can tell you and our planning department have been working all weekend so that we were able to actually pass this and have it up and ready to go as soon as the council votes today. So, I appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
With the county and you taking the time to come down here to show it to us, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Mr. Begley?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo what my colleagues have said, and I'm glad to support this today. And in addition, all the first responders that my colleagues have mentioned, with OPOA, Omaha Police, Omaha Fire, and the first responders in surrounding communities, the Omaha Douglas County sheriffs. I also want to commend where I've been an employee for 34 years at the Omaha Public Power District. Being out Saturday with most of my colleagues, surveying and talking to people and helping people, it was so beautiful to see, besides the volunteers, the first responders that are linemen at OPPD. There is armies and armies of boots and those hard hats on the ground, complementing what police and fire and rescue are doing as first responders. They're de-energizing lines, making it safe for people to get in and do the work that they do. Also, the MUD employees, Council President Fesserson and I had had a lot of conversations with different agencies, MUD, OPPD, the airport, countless others, just to make sure we were all informed the best we could without tripping over each other and being as efficient as we could. So, I know the MUD employees out there with water and natural gas, they had their members out there. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention IBW Brothers of 763 at OPPD. Those guys, I've known them for years, and they tease me a lot because I'm not a lineman, but I got great respect for the work they do. And the MUD employees as well for IBW 1521 Gas and Water, complementing the fire and rescue and all the things that were going on, keeping people safe that were impacted by this. Also, as was mentioned, Public Works and Parks employees, local 251 members, couldn't have done it. It was just beautiful to see, in a terrible disaster, all these bodies of government that people want to hammer on a lot. It really was an efficient joining of bodies of all these different entities to make our communities, got a long way to go, but it was right out of the gate where we saw that on Saturday. And I'll put my OPPD hat on. I can tell you a story, yesterday I went out, met with a customer owner of OPPD that is running Junk Stock by the name of Sarah Alexander. And if everybody's familiar where that property is, there was a fleet of OPPD trucks, I would say 20 or 30 of them, big boom trucks. And they were restoring power along, I think it's River Road. And I talked to Sarah about her property damage, and she allowed OPPD crews not only to go in there to restore power, but also kind of have their vehicles at a point there so it's easier to access and get in to help the other areas of town. And Sarah became emotional, and she said I could share this story, but I think it's just a small sliver of what the community has done. She was emotional, saying that she wasn't worried about Junk Stock until the next day she was going to cancel it. And there was an army of people, many of them strangers she didn't even know, that showed up and were just cleaning her acreage of grounds. And she was so overwhelmed, she was glad to share this, that she's saying, "We're going to have Junk Stock, and this is a cult following, I need to get out and check this thing out myself." But she was so overwhelmed with the OPPD employees, they had a bulldozer pulling those trucks in and out to minimally be invasive on her property so it didn't destroy everything. But she wanted me personally to thank people that, May 3rd and 5th this weekend, Junk Stock's going to go on. And maybe that's a little light for people in the community that things, as much as we got to rebuild, these are the stories, and we can all share them, of how people were impacted, and the volunteers in the community coming together to compliment, getting things back up and running. I think that's a great testament for Omaha. So, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a lot more to say than what's already been said. But I, too, appreciate the city employees and the way that they responded, as well as our neighbors. But I think sometimes we forget that our city employees are people. And we had police officers that lost homes, and we had firefighters that lost homes, and we had Public Works people that had homes damaged. And so, but they show up to work, and they did a great job. They really, the guys from Public Works were right behind OPPD, clearing streets so that people could get in and out, right behind OPPD. And then the volunteers followed, you know, that night and the next day. So, I think sometimes we forget, it's a horrific thing, but it really showed the spirit of our community and how much we really do care for each other. And I think we're fortunate to be where we are.
Thank you. I support this, too, and I'll give just brief remarks, and then ask maybe Councilman Harding and Ms. Melton if they want to make a motion in a second to approve it. One detail about it that might not be evident by the paperwork is that in waiving these fees, that is not just the city of Omaha, that is the three mile jurisdiction around Omaha where we issue building permits. And the reason why I think that's significant is that a lot of the damage didn't necessarily occur just within the city of Omaha city limits, but in a pretty broad swath of area there. So, it'll apply to all those cases, and I think that's important to point out. And then I'd also just say, it was super impressive, within 24 hours, the number of inter-agencies that were working on this issue together. City and county, for sure, but Governor Pillen, General Strong, Western Nebraska National Guard. Guard, the Airport Authority, OPPD had an army of trucks, I witnessed that too with Mr. Begley, really impressive, poles going in the ground, literally six hours later, reestablishing power to the, to the area. And then cemented issues you don't always think about, but the Weather Service was heavily involved. The private sector media, in terms of our meteorologists were involved and very helpful to, to preventing the loss of life and loss of structures. And even today, are working hard to make sure people are informed about the weather warnings we have currently from about 3:00 to 7:00 today. The Humane Society, folks don't often think about them in terms of public safety, but that's definitely an aspect of what they do. They were engaged and involved with this. So, so many people to give notice and credit to that are now working on this and will continue to work on this going forward, not the least of which is all the volunteers and the citizens. I witnessed the same thing at the Relevant Center, thousands of people that next morning, 7:00 in the morning, ready to start helping. And then because I do have some insight into corporate Omaha too, I want to point out that what I've seen already is huge financial contributions from the corporate community to fund recovery for citizens, not just public infrastructure, but basic needs. And some of those entities that folks are interested in helping include the United Way and Salvation Army, the Community Foundation, Red Cross, and then certainly St. Patrick's Church and some of the folks involved on the ground there. So consider helping out with that financially too, if you're watching this on TV.
Omaha Response Team, I forgot to mention that because they were, I didn't mean to interrupt, but they, they were instrumental in organizing all the different entities and then trying to keep everyone in, in tune so that we didn't have a thousand volunteers who didn't know where to go. So that's, that, that was another one that, very impressive, who helped work with everyone, so.
Great. Helps on the way. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Rowe, Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item 43, a resolution to approve funding to PACE in the amount of $50,000 to operate youth sports programming.
Public hearing and vote on number 43 is today. We'll first have a presentation from Mayor Stoddart, and then we'll have proponents and opponents.
I'm Jean Stoddart, Mayor of the City of Omaha, 1819 Farnham. Good afternoon, council members. Before I begin my testimony, I also want to thank everyone that assisted in any way, our friends and neighbors that are impacted by Friday's tornado and storms, the volunteers, the first responders, city employees, council members, you are all out there early in the morning. Every personal interaction that any of us had with someone who lost home or property really did make a difference. We can all share stories. I know from our visits to the area, the homeowners I have met were very grateful and they were very hopeful. The volunteers were very generous. Our police officers, our firefighters and other city employees are strong in spirit. Omaha is a community of caring. I think we all know that and can really see that now, and it has been very, very apparent in the last five days. The city will continue to provide resources and support. My sincere thanks to every one of you for what you've done. Now, the resolution that's here before you today is to resume city funding for PACE, police athletics for community engagement. The city has been and remains an advocate for PACE through the use of our public facilities and our sports fields, volunteers and financial contributions. But as we all know, the criminal action of former leaders of this organization and the lengthy FBI investigation disparage what has been a commendable community program, and it required me to suspend our financial support. At that time, we could not be certain that the taxpayer money that we were giving PACE was being spent honestly and for the appropriate purposes. So over the last nine months, I have initiated numerous meetings with PACE Board of Directors to rebuild the organization's leadership and trust so that this sports program and youth mentoring PACE is known for can continue. And Chief Schmader has been involved with this, with me from the very beginning. My expectations and my requirements had been very clear. One, PACE would not receive taxpayer funds again until we reviewed a full accounting of their finances and a guarantee that going forward, appropriate accounting practices were in place. PACE must be accountable to all of its donors, including the City of Omaha. Since 2017, the City of Omaha has provided nearly half a million dollars to PACE from our general fund. We also allocated $360,000 from the American Rescue Plan money. PACE had to give some of the ARPA funds back because they could not account for how it was spent and did not comply with the federal requirements and guidelines. There can never again be a question about how the taxpayers' dollars are being spent. Number two, the PACE Board of Directors needs to be whole again, following recent resignations, and that is underway. PACE is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The mayor does not appoint the PACE Board. The Board of Directors is expected to provide oversight. The lack of oversight by the previous board resulted in the suspension of city funds. Three, PACE must rebrand. The name PACE is now tarnished and they need a fresh start. I want to see the program expanded to North Omaha and add Omaha firefighters as coaches and volunteers. With the Omaha Sports Commission now acting as the executive director and managing the operations and in agreement with these requirements, I feel very confident that we now can resume funding to PACE right now. The $50,000 that we proposed today will pay for the maintenance of sports fields, uniform for soccer players and salaries for soccer program leaders. The city's support is necessary to show donors that we believe in this reorganized program, and they can too. There is no PACE line item budget in the 2024 budget that you all approved last year. However, under the Community Development Support section in the Community Service Program, we budgeted 40, that we usually budget about $40,000 a year annually for needs that come up during the year. I added an additional $50,000 in 2024 in that section that you all approved, hoping that we could get PACE moving forward this year. But there was no line item for PACE, that is accurate. Please understand that none of these nonprofits that we fund with the community service dollars are funded without an application, an agreement, an approved budget, a financial review and a specific plan how exactly the money is going to be spent. PACE did not apply for funding in 2024. Along with the Sports Commission and the PACE Board, we are hopeful that donor funding will follow our renewed financial commitment, and that's the way it must work. The city should not be the sole or the largest funder of any nonprofit organization, including PACE. We will watch the spring and summer program very closely, and if necessary, we can consider additional funds for the fall program only if needed. I have also invited PACE to apply for up to $100,000 in the 2025 budget. Chief Schmader has renewed his commitment to PACE. This program complements community policing, and we all know that. Officers volunteer their time to recruit kids off the street and teach them principles of sportsmanship, responsibility and teamwork. Many officers who serve as coaches and mentors will tell you that they get more out of it than the kids do. And we want these relationships to continue. The focus of this program must always be on the kids. Unbelievably, the focus changed under previous leadership, as evidenced by three men who are now in prison, including PACE's former executive director and a fourth who is now awaiting trial. I hope you will vote to approve this resolution and reinstate funding to PACE. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Any proponents that want to speak today?
Good afternoon. Ken Kangar, 5105 South 37th Street, PACE Board member, Kristi Heitz. On behalf of the PACE Board, Deputy Chief Anna Cologne, Jeff Fuqua, Chief Financial Officer with Hawkins Construction, and Socorro Carrera, who is with the Mexican consulate, as well as Lindsey Toussaint with Omaha Sports Commission, our current executive director and her team. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for considering reinvesting in the PACE program. The mayor's outlined the success with PACE, but also talked about the challenges and things that have occurred over the last couple of years. We all know that the decisions of a couple have put a program in peril that for many years has been impeccable and had tremendous success. It's important that I remind everybody of that success, the crime reduction, the transparency, the relationships that were built between police and the youth, the families, those clearance rates that you hear the chief talk about, all those things are indicative of strong community and youth engagement strategies, and PACE was one of the strongest and is going to again be one of the strongest in the, in the country. I speak to that with just a little bit of a unique perspective because I've not only been a coach, a volunteer on the board, but I also was with the Omaha Police Department for 25 years as a lieutenant, a captain, and then retiring as a deputy chief. I've seen directly the impacts. And really, I'll speak honestly, when I was a lieutenant over the gang unit, one of the first times that I realized the importance of the program is when I went down there on a Friday afternoon about 5:00 and saw Officer Kerry Roscoe and Kenny Fortune coaching youth in South Omaha, but kids really from all across the community were on those teams all afternoon in full gear. And I mean coaching, mentoring, teaching and enjoying Little League baseball with those kids. And then later that night, in response to an uptick in some gang and gun violence, they were out in the streets of the City of Omaha protecting this community. And that is community engagement, that's youth engagement, and that's what's important with this city and, and the results that we see as a result of that program. But we understand, we can't be out on the field teaching those kids about accountability, about integrity and all those important things unless we as a board, we as an organization instill those as well and don't have individuals around the organization that are going to compromise those, because kids were left with questions as well as a result of this. We want to move forward. This is a huge step for us to move forward. And again, we appreciate this opportunity and this time, this funding will go towards programming for kids for the soccer, phone calls that we're already getting questions about what that looks like. And the rest of the summer and the rest of the year depends on the support that we get, but we know and realize that this is a strong first step. And this is a critical time. We're just weeks out from kids heading home for the summer. We know how important the summertime is, and one of the founding staples of PACE was prior to summer, making sure kids had positive youth engagement, athletics and support through the course of the summer. We're going to do everything we can as a board and as a leadership team to make sure they have that opportunity. So again, I appreciate it very much. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon. Lindsey Toussaint, 16304 Saratoga Street. As Ken mentioned, I am the executive director of the Omaha Sports Commission and the, now the executive director of PACE, and I just wanted to say thank you for considering this. It is very important to the kids in the communities, and we all know from the Sports Commission's side at least, the importance of being in sports, a vibrant community and finding a place of belonging. And we feel that is very important for these kids to be, and these families to be a part of. So thank you for your consideration and as Ken mentioned here to answer your questions as well.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President and sitting city council members. Deputy Chief Anna Cologne with the Omaha Police Department. And I'm currently the sitting secretary on the Board of Directors for PACE. I can't express enough any more than what my constituents have already said about the work that PACE has done, and the mayor has said what the work that PACE has done within our community. I can tell you time after time of how many children, how many at-risk youth that PACE has directly affected. Everyone in this room knows that our environment directly impacts whether or not we will or will not succeed in life. And, and with PACE, that is the only outlet that so many of our underprivileged youth have. They don't have mentors, they don't have anyone in their home environment to encourage them and to show them what it's like to succeed. PACE is the only outlet that they have, and without the city's support, without the community's report, support, we will not be able to reach out to those youth. And as Chief Kangar has expressly said, and so has Chief Schmader, our crime statistics clearly show that when we implemented the community engagement portion of our policing, that is when our crime rates started to go down. And without PACE, we, we will lose probably a generation within our community. So I strongly encourage you to consider supporting PACE again. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Mayor, my name is Skipford Momarts Brown. Or since I got hit by that car last June, you can call me the man in the street. I apologize for the last time I was up here not explaining that by parliamentary tradition, any legislative chamber is considered outdoors, and so a gentleman should wear cover when he's in a legislative chamber, and that's why I did not take my cap off. So out of a tradition dating back to the boule's of ancient Athens, it's a sign of respect, not offense.
You're doing fine, just make sure you address number 43.
Pardon?
You're doing fine, just make sure you address number 43 here.
Also, you may not know about my background. I have three broad area endorsements for teaching, and I was certified in 10 different states.
So for you, you have to address PACE funding, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the best ways of educating is what they call immersion. And that's what this is, is you're immersing them, immersing them in a culture of, well, the social contract, which was the last issue also, but of teaching kids how to play or work or interact as a part of society. And I think that's a valuable lesson for every school-aged child to learn, and a lot of adults too. So I'm all in favor of, of this program, and I agree with her honor. I would like to see it expanded throughout the city and get the Fire and Safety Squad Department, whatever term you use, involved in the same sort of role that the, the Police Department is. And that's basically all I, I wanted to say is to encourage you as much as I possibly can and give you all a metaphorical pat on the back, say, go forward.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. Thank you for allowing me to come to the microphone. I'm an opponent of the resolution for a number of reasons, but I also want to make a complaint right here, right now. Mr. Festerston, you have never let me do anything like you just let that gentleman do.
Larry, I question him.
Out of order. Are you going to kick me out today in front of the mayor?
Not as long as you speak to the floor.
You don't call him out of order, but you always call me out of order. Stop it.
All you got to do is speak to the floor.
You're against the citizens. I have a right to speak on it.
Go ahead.
Now, I'm against this. Number one, maybe there was not enough oversight, but back in the day, this, the community got together to provide all this stuff. Citizens got together, neighbors got together, kids got together. We didn't go to the city council or Douglas County Board to ask for dollars to do that. We didn't have to form 501(c)(3). We didn't have to run for the treasury dollars. Clawback might be risking your actions here. I'm not totally against the mayor, but there's been entirely too many people on this board and the Douglas County Board and at the state, running to steal the federal ARPA money. And just wait until they say, this does not qualify. You can't do everything in the city with clawback money. We want our money back. How are you going to answer the 501(c)(3) people then? How are you going to ask me for more money? You need to, if you don't have the money for it, then don't do it. You're not authorized by the people to overspend, to put our, our money at risk. You're not authorized. Don't you get it?
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Mayor? City Council? Mark Martinez, 4530 T Street, lived there since 1986. Prior to that, grew up at 19th and J Street, lifelong South Omaha resident. Prior to that, grew up at 19th and J Street, lifelong South Omaha resident. First of all, mayor, council, thank you for what you do on a daily basis. You do a tremendous amount of work. The pay isn't nearly what it should be. And you take criticism. I learned that as an OPS board member for seven years. It was kind of a rude awakening, but I thank you for that. Everybody wants to be a beast until they have to do what a beast does, so. I ask for your understanding as I talk a bit about myself. I was raised to be a humble individual. And it's a little bit difficult, but I hope you can appreciate the context, context with which it's intended. Former Omaha Police Department Chief Tom Warren and I were officers, young officers in the mid-'80s, working on the same crew in North Omaha, four to midnight shift. Tom and I became friends, talked about engaging young people in our respective communities. We both knew the value of mentorship, of being able to inspire young people, particularly Latinos and African-Americans from our respective communities. We were both blessed with people who set positive examples for us, inspired us, gave us hope. Dr. Jim Ramirez out at UNO, and I was a student. It's about the only Latino person out there for Latino students at the time. So those are the examples I'm talking about. Others included police officers as mentors who practiced community policing before it was a policing strategy, including my father, who became Omaha's first Latino officer in Tom and I talked about rising through the ranks. Went to graduate school because it made us better law enforcement officers, but we, again, both had aspirations to move up and we needed to be more competitive, as our mentors inspired us to do. Among the ways in which Tom and I tried to do for young people what was done for us, we participated in the Supervised Police Athletic League. You still have young people approaching me and saying, hey, I remember those days at Indian Hill, I remember Junior High, I remember those days at Mars Junior High. It was fun. It served its purpose. We shared stories of being student athletes, Tom at Tech and playing football at Morningside and me at South High School and playing baseball at UNO and the life skills that we learned through athletics. We both ascended the ranks. Tom became the chief. He one-upped me. I retired as a deputy chief and went on to be blessed with the presidential appointment to be the U.S. Marshal for the District of Nebraska. Now, I share my example, but can assure you that there are many Latinos from South Omaha that have succeeded, not just me. And we were blessed to have mentors and people we could look up to. And it meant a little bit more. Mayor, I can remember you celebrating when you won the very first time. And I remember a group of women that were interviewed, and I don't remember their names. There was a name for the group, but obviously they were close to you. And it meant something to them because we had a woman mayor, and I thought that was Now, some of you may be thinking, what the heck does this have to do with Pace? Well, after the unfortunate circumstances surrounding Pace, I met with Chief Schmodder, whom I helped train as a young police officer when I was on the training staff. I also met with the Pace Board of Directors chairperson to discuss the future of Pace and the leadership, but to no avail. Told him, if not me, can we talk about South Omaha leaders being involved in the future of Pace? I attempted to meet with the mayor, but mayor, you didn't want to meet with me. Why, I don't know. Please know, again, there's individuals in the South Omaha community that are capable and qualified to lead Pace, dictating program oversight without adequate, adequate community input, without community representation as leaders of Pace in some manner, in some fashion, is not empowering a community. That's stunting community growth. Dictating program oversight without adequate community input strips the community of dignity and sends a terrible message, especially to young people, that somehow, some way, you're not capable. The exact thing that contributes to brain drain. I teach, I'm an adjunct instructor at UNO. I teach freshmen. I teach a criminal justice course. And I do it for a purpose. I think I have something of value in teaching young people. But it thrills me when there's first-gen Latinos in my class and I can try and set an example for them and tell them anything's possible. Please don't prove me wrong here. That sends a terrible message to them. I'm going to ask you to vote no because the yes vote is going to strip the community of its dignity and the suppression of healthy growth and empowerment, empowerment of the South Omaha community, particularly the Latino community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Good afternoon. Ben Salazar, 1703 Ontario Street. Ladies and gentlemen, mayor, thank you for the opportunity. You know, my plática, my conversation this afternoon follows really along the lines of what Mark just said. I'm opposed. Let's put that out there first and foremost to me and to many members of my community, the Latino community, which I represent. We all feel the same way about this. This is an insult. $50,000 is a $50,000 insult to my community. It's striking, and I don't have to remind you of what's just happened here. The opponents are not people from my community, the proponents rather. They're people from outside the community. The opponents that you're hearing from today are from the community. There's a little irony in that, some sad irony. And that's the truth. That's what's happening here. $50,000 compared to what North Omaha is getting into huge facilities, 400 million there, 400 million over there. Man, $50,000 maybe for these guys down in South Omaha. That's a slap in the face. You know, I grew up in a Jim Crow jurisdiction in West Nebraska. That was ugly. I didn't like it. I didn't like the feeling of being oppressed. I'm a Vietnam vet. When my country called nonetheless, I said, well, you got to go, I got to go. I went. But that was an awakening for me. In 1966, when I was shipped to Virginia, I stopped off at a restaurant from the bus, walked inside. Unbeknownst to me, there were two restaurants. I walked in on the black side. All right, that's cool. You know, I'm a diverse dude. Walked in, sat down, made my order, was treated with respect, got me a hamburger and a Coke. Asked if there was a restroom nearby, and the young man said, yeah, right through them doors. Went through them doors, came out the other side, there's another restaurant. It's all white. 1966. It's all black. It's all white. Inside, I kind of chuckled and where am I, where do I belong in America? I'm in uniform. Where do I belong? I was really thankful I went in on the black side, believe me. They fed me. They fed me. To me, sometimes I wake up, I think I'm back in 1965. I think, is this America that I wanted this to be? I'm a veteran of the civil rights movement. I'm an activist, a protester, a marcher. This is what we've come to? Where the mayor says he's going to vote for a guy like Donald Trump? Are you kidding me? A man who has called my community-
So Ben, I want to make sure you stick to item number 43.
I got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
But this is where we're at in Omaha, Nebraska, a diverse city that wants to be a great city. It can be a great city someday, but this is a very diverse city. We're not dumb. We're not naive. We just don't have the power. We haven't elevated that level of leadership yet, but they're coming up. And we have to recognize that. This to me, this takeover of non-community people in my community, to me is a form of ethnic cleansing. I'll put that in stark terms. It's a form of ethnic cleansing. They've got one Latina from the Mexican consulate. Porcita, I feel bad for her. She's a token, token dragged in from the Mexican consulate. When we have capable leaders in our community that can lead this effort, that can be on this board, that can be the board president, and yet we're bypassed. Why? We haven't done anything to this mayor. We haven't slapped anybody around or offended anybody on this council or anywhere else. We're working people. I'm an optimist. I believe my community can do great things. I believe other people can do great things, but we've got to do it together. We can't be divisive. What's happening here is extremely divisive. So yeah, I'm objecting to the $50,000 insult. That's what this is. Let's do the right thing for change. Let's be more inclusive for a change. That's what I challenge you to do. Thank you.
Any other opponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I am opposed to this not because of the financial setup, which is the moving a payment, $50,000 from the Community Services General Fund. I think that's appropriate expenditure. In the past, I would have liked to seen more of it. What I am opposed to is the amount. I think that the mayor office and the media denigrated Pace, the reputation of it, not in South Omaha, but in the community throughout. And $50,000 isn't going to make up for it. I think that her honor needs to recognize that the posturing towards Pace, for whatever reason, was undermining the operations of Pace. And so if this is the start, great, vote for it, say yes. But this is not the end. Pace needs to be supported by the council and the city budget because of the mission of Pace and the founding of Pace, which involved city officials to help youth in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Thank you, city council. My name is Anna Hernandez, 1266 Augusta Avenue. I am here proposing it, mayor. Thank you for the time here. I have to tell on what Mr. Salazar says and what Mr. Martinez says. They were my mentors when I grew up, and many of my family and friends have benefited by Pace. What happened was unfortunate, but an organization is a reflection of our community. And currently, it's not truly a reflection of our community, which is imperative. That being said, that is why I'm in opposition of this, once again, because the board does not reflect the community, especially the Latino community. I do know Socorro, who is from the Mexican consulate. She did go to South High School, so I do know her personally, and I do commend her experience. But we need more of a reflection from our community, and that needs to be taken into account. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public carriers closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions for Mr. Kanger, please. Hi.
Hi.
Before council today, I shared with you a few things that I was concerned about. And then we have proponents that have come up and also shared some similar, if not different concerns. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address those concerns. You want me to go over those concerns?
I want to make sure I address all of them for you. Obviously, the diversity and makeup of the board and the organization is important to the board as well. And Socorro is a huge piece of our board and a huge sounding board for the South Omaha community. When we went through the executive director, when we were looking for a new executive director, and that entire process, that was a big piece to make sure. We were looking at diversity, and we were looking at all segments of the community. Pace has always served the entire community. I live in a segment of South Omaha. We have folks amongst our board, obviously, that are diverse. It's important to us. We want to serve all the kids throughout the city of Omaha. We're in the process of putting the board, additional members back onto the board. I'm having conversations with a lot of community leaders that I feel I have a lot of confidence in, and we're looking at that board makeup and how it looks. Again, the other thing that has been mentioned is our posture and our representation in North Omaha and how important that is. And making sure that we're looking for board members with the skill sets, the representation throughout the city, to make sure it's diverse and well-represented throughout the city because it is a program of the city.
So should I take that to mean that you will be addressing the board makeup in terms of it being reflective of what the community looks like there in South Omaha?
Absolutely. We're in the process of that now.
There was also a concern about the amount of $50,000. Hate to put you on the spot, but $50,000 in my mind really doesn't cover an annual salary for an individual in this day and time. So how, help me understand and help the proponents to understand how this $50,000 will help.
Well, that's, any support is appreciated. And again, it's going to serve a lot of kids that are going to play soccer. There's other support that we are pursuing currently and that we are involved in. But that support is integral. And again, this is a first step. The ability to use the fields, the trust and confidence of the mayor's office, the work that we've been doing for a long period of time, the patience the mayor, city council, Chief Schmodder has had, all that's going to benefit. It's a step forward in the right direction for us, and we plan to program for 800 kids in the soccer program. That's pretty significant, and that's just the start. Frankly, depending on that budget, if I have to run summer camps all year long on a limited budget, we'll do it. If we have the resources to have a full baseball league, we'll do it. It just depends on those resources. But it doesn't take much to engage the youth. A police officer getting out of a car with a positive note and in a relationship is a step in the right direction. And $50,000, we can do a lot with to make sure that the kids have a positive summer. And then we'll grow from there.
I think what they were trying to draw attention to was that $50,000 is not enough. I would agree, $50,000 is not enough. I would agree with entertaining the notion or the opportunity for more to be given to this cost because they have been without. How much is in your budget now? I mean, how, how can you continue to operate when money was taken away last year? This organization, money was taken away. And so this community is saying that they think that $50,000 is not enough. They're looking for more. So would you say that, you know, that perhaps we need to look at considering giving more money?
We are appreciative and grateful for any support that we get from the council- We are appreciative and grateful for any support that we get from the council, the mayor's office, and any of our supporters throughout the community. And the end of the day, any of that support is gonna positively benefit the youth.
Council members, I'll just remind folks to speak into their microphones to make sure everyone can hear. If they can't hear, if you're having problems hearing, come down and get a listening device from the city clerk. But no more outbursts or standing up in the audience, please. That's very disruptive. Continue, please.
President, the mic has always been a problem for me as city council. It has nothing to do with being closer. It has everything to do with mechanics. And so perhaps the building commissioner needs to look at either replacing the mics, fixing the mics, et cetera. So that's why the individuals cannot hear in the back of the room, because the system needs to be overall, overhauled. It needs to be evaluated for its effectiveness. So if you guys are still having question, still are unable to hear me here, please come up closer instead of being in the back of the room, because the mic issue is not gonna be addressed today. It's not gonna be addressed next week. So come closer so that you can hear me.
And there are listening devices available if folks need them. I want to make sure people know that, too. Continue.
There was also a concern about the area being stunted with growth. There was the young lady that came up, her name was Lizzie Toussaint. She was concerned about South Omaha's growth would be stunted by the decision being made today in terms of the board makeup, I guess. Can you speak to that? Do you think that these changes that we're having are entertaining to have? Will they have any impact on stunting the growth? I guess what I'm looking for from you is for you to talk about how you plan to be concerned or plan to put initiatives in place to address some of the concerns regarding being able to attract the Latino community.
I think we already have, and we're gonna continue to do that. We've ran a soccer program for the last several weeks, and it's heavily attended. We're already getting calls about the soccer program with the current makeup of the board and the management team that we have. And frankly, I coached and volunteered all last summer. And the kids, the families still come. And actually, we had to turn some away because of the funding and the things that we were dealing with. So there's not gonna be any stunt in the growth. Quite the opposite. There is plenty of kids in North and South Omaha that are eager to play baseball, eager to be involved. I got approached by a faculty member at McMillan, whom I used to go to all the time for lunch and have kids play flag football at McMillan, looking for positive programming, baseball options for kids at McMillan. There's not gonna be any stunt. We're gonna continue to grow. This is a small step in a positive direction, and it's just gonna continue to build from there. And that's the, that's the direction of the board and the management team under Lindsey Toussaint, the sports commission. It's only gonna continue to increase from here. That's, that's my commitment to you, the mayor, and the city of Omaha. And with Chief Schmader's support, it's gonna grow throughout the community. There's not gonna be any stunt in the growth, and kids are gonna have the privilege to be involved in activities all summer long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ken, I'm...
Would you speak into the microphone, please?
Ken, appreciate your comments earlier, too. And I want to make sure that we remember where we are today. PACE and PACE's reputation was not only tarnished, but I'll say obliterated by the actions of a few very selfish people. And we are in a period now of rebuilding that trust. And that includes, and I was happy to hear you say, and I know it was one of the mayor's conditions for becoming involved again with PACE, and that is really kind of a rebranding. The original concept of PACE and what it can be are still the same, but I think with the name, I think you're right, we do need a rebranding and to move forward and use this as an opportunity to not only include maybe other, other parts of our community that maybe weren't completely included before. So I'm very appreciative of that. So I find it interesting that we sit here today and some are saying $50,000 is a slap in the face. I'll put it out there as a question, not for anyone really to answer, but to linger in the air for just a minute to bring us back to the point of what the $50,000 means. I believe in 2023, the city threw various commitments and budgeted a total of about $126,000 to PACE. Prior to that, in prior years, it was about $50,000. What I heard here today was the mayor's saying that we're to consider $50,000 today, and there might be more for the fall. So we're sitting here saying that, or some are saying that this is a slap in the face? This is very consistent with the amount of funding that the city has given in the past to PACE. On top of that, you also pointed out, Ken, that what the $50,000 is and demonstrates to the rest of our philanthropic and charitable community is that the city is willing to reinvest in, in the concept of PACE and whatever that name may be going forward. Much like we spent, or the city committed $50 million to our three parks in downtown, which turned into a $400 million project, that's the kind of leverage that, that I think this same investment that we are going to approve today is going to do for the philanthropic and charitable communities and their interest and re, I guess, reintroducing to them or giving the opportunity to trust in the concept of PACE going forward. So it, again, I'm baffled by people saying this is a slap in the face for this amount of funding, because it's very consistent with what we've done in the past. No one complained about that in the past. And it's very consistent to what some of the other nonprofits that we give to, as the mayor said, I mean, there's an application process. PACE didn't even make an application for funding in '24. There's an application process. There's an analysis process. There's a accountability process. And we need to be going through, we need to make sure, especially with this program, that we build that trust up again. So I commend you for your commitment to doing that. And then, as it relates to the board, it should be stated that, obviously, the city, the mayor, has no, we don't appoint or elect the board members. You are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and, and the board is made up thusly, and not by the, not by the city and not by the city council. They don't, like other boards and commissions associated with the city that come to us for, for approval of the recommendations, that's not, that's not the case here. And I know, and I've heard you say it here on the record, that you are looking at, at those kinds of people who are willing to serve on the board, who represent the community. So I am fully supportive of what we're considering here today. And I want people to know that it's very consistent to what our funding levels have been in the past. But, and you pointed out, too. I mean, we're, you're in a rebuilding process through your board. You're, you're down to, I believe, you're down to four board members, correct?
That's correct.
And by your bylaws, you have, I think, the ability to have nine, I believe?
That's correct.
So you're in, you've got the opportunity for, for those others who want to give back to the community, who want to give back, give their personal time and experiences so that they can be mentors and help grow this program again to what it was and make it even better. So thank you for that. And thank you to the sports commission for stepping in to be the executive director, because you have a lot of work, and I, and I appreciate you taking on that task.
We do, and thank you, and we embrace that.
Thank you, Mr. Hug. You're recognized. Only I've called upon.
Go ahead and let Mr. Salazar speak, and then I'll, I'll speak.
You have the floor. If you'd like to recognize him, you may.
Okay. Mr. Salazar, I'll recognize you. Thank you.
Take up some of your time, Mr. Hug. Thank you. Let me, let me set the record straight, Mr. Harding, to address what you just stated, because you're misconstruing what we're, what's happening here. You just stated something that I know is not true, and the mayor herself said it, which is she's been meeting with the PACE board for six months to try to reconstruct everything from the administration to the board itself. We weren't invited to these meetings. Community wasn't invited to those meetings. This was between the mayor, her staff, and the board. Had we been invited as the Latino community, this gentleman here might not be president of the board. Board members might not be the same. The Omaha Sports Commission is 95% white. How in the heck did they get a contract to run a Latino organization, sports organization? This is the LPOA that began and built the PACE program, the Latino Peace Officers. I hate to point fingers at the new LPOA, but they should be the ones standing right here in opposition, with us, to say that, that's our predecessors. Those are our elders that started this program. How does the city, how does the mayor have the audacity to come in and ethnic clean this whole program in our community? So what you're stating is, is not true. It's not accurate. No, it's not. No, it's not. She just stated earlier, been meeting with them, not us, with them dictating. No doubt, handpicked some of the board members. Gave us one token, oh yeah, let's put a brown face in there. Maybe, maybe that'll appease the brown people. Well, it doesn't. It's not about the money. You can drop the money. We'll pick it up. The community will pick it up. They don't need that $50,000. The community will step up. It's not about the money. It's about the leadership. It's about this is a homegrown program by, for, and with Latino inclusion. That's what the game is, not the $50,000. Keep the $50,000. Keep the money, but let us have control. Let the community, Mr. Hug, take control. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Did I lose all my time with Mr. Salazar?
Nope, we're still yours.
Ken, I feel obligated to acknowledge that we're neighbors. You live just over the hill from me. You are one of my constituents, and you do reside in my district. So I just wanted to put that out there. I consider you, like me, from South Omaha. And, and Mr. Harding, I do have the numbers that you referred, referred to. In 2027, with the help of Councilman Festerson making the resolution, PACE got their first money from the city of Omaha. It was $20,000. Would not have happened without Councilman Festerson. In 2018, PACE received $35,000. In 2019, PACE received $55,000. In 2020, PACE received $60,000. Bear with me, we've got a few more years. In 2021, PACE received $100,000. In 2022, another $100,000. And in 2023, they received $126,000 for a grand total of $496. I've heard a lot of people make a lot of comments today. But what I had not heard anybody say is, it's about the kids. And that's what everyone in this room needs to understand and remember. It's about the kids. It's not about who the board members are. It's not about whether we're getting money. It's about providing the services to the kids. If that's important to you, and we could all agree upon that, then we can all walk out of here and say, we've done something today. But I'm, I'm ecstatic that the mayor decided to give PACE $50,000, because I know firsthand, when PACE first had those meetings, it's my understanding, it was presented at PACE, that PACE would not receive any money in 2024. We've stood right here today, and we've listened to the mayor say that she's open to more money in the fall. From where we've started to where we are at today, we've come a long way. Is it perfect, Mark? No, Mark, it's not perfect. I'd like to see it better. But to me, it's more important that those kids are on the fields, that we have sponsors on the fields, that we have coaches on the fields. That's more important to me. Do I have confidence that Ken and his staff is gonna make it better? Absolutely. And Ken knows that if I don't like it, Ken knows he will hear from me, and he's smiling. And that's a fact. But I'm willing to give them the leeway they need to make it better. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good afternoon, Mr. Kanger. If you've got a minute, please. Mr. Kanger, we heard from people in the community today. So your board has, has provided to us four members on your board now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And is, you want to rebrand or get PACE up and running again to address, you know, there was some things that happened where people violated the trust and violated the law, and they're paying the price for that. But most importantly, that we're focused on today is the kids that PACE originally was formed by, Mr. Martinez's dad was a giant and a legend in the community, in the Hispanic community in South Omaha. As we go forward from here, your board expanding it, are you gonna expand it to more members? Councilman Harding touched on that. So your goal is to expand beyond the four, is that correct?
Absolutely. And I've been in contact with respected leaders throughout the community, trying to assemble names and get advice to make sure that we put together the strongest board that represents the entire city for the initiative of the PACE program, whether it's law enforcement, public safety, business leaders, legal minds, philanthropic ties to the community, because we understand that. We have to, we have to represent our community, and that's the intent of the board. But we've had a lot, I think it's been mentioned here today, that we're dealing with, a lot of meetings and a lot of organization with the sports commission, and a lot going on. But rebuilding that board the strongest way we can to represent the entire city is right up there at the highest priority.
I appreciate that. And that, that means, let's be specific here, that means the North Omaha and the South Omaha community, in addition to the entire city, but the community of South Omaha and the community of North Omaha.
Absolutely. I've had conversations with former Chief Warren about what the plans are for North Omaha. We all know the Cary Roscoe Fields in North Omaha, Black Police Officers Association's been heavily involved with PACE. I have meetings with their representation to make sure we reengage them. And I've had many conversations with a business leader in North Omaha about who would be a good potential selection from the North Omaha community to represent our board to make sure, again, that we represent this entire community.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kuzy, can I just clarify? I didn't miss anything when we had a little sidebar confirming that the board would be, as Mr. Kanger said, seven or maybe nine members eventually. Is that fair?
Sorry, Matt Kuzy, City of Omaha, a lot of department, that does reflect what you and I discussed earlier during some prior questioning.
Okay, and I appreciate you clarifying that. Mr. Kanger, thanks for clarifying that. But I, I would stress to you, to that commitment you're making today, that that is followed through on. Mr. Martinez is here today and others in the Latino community that I greatly respect, that have ties and roots of generations in South Omaha. It would be a great benefit for the board going forward, and I am gonna support this today. And I was, you know, I'm glad that it's $50,000. I wish we could put a lot of zeros on it, but I think the commitment from the will of the council hopefully is there to provide additional funding in the future, and that PACE, that gets rebranded, its goal of helping kids and connecting them to law enforcement or mentors that have been great in this community and will be great for the future of Omaha, that the commitment will be there, and that I'll look forward to supporting this today. But with your commitment, again, that there will be the conversations when you expand the board to seven or nine, that it will reflect the communities that it's representing. Thank you. to seven or nine, that it will reflect the communities that it's representing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Anna, if I could call you up?
Yes, ma'am. Deputy Chief Anna Cologne, Omaha Police Department.
And how long have you been involved with Pace? I mean, you're not new.
No, ma'am. I've been with the Omaha Police Department for approximately 24 years. And I became involved with Pace right around the time when Carrier-Roscoe started it. So that would have been 2013, 14-ish.
And so I know, and I think what happened is, yes, Pace's reputation and how it was being run got tarnished by some members who were on the board, from the community.
Correct. Some of our founders.
We don't need to rehash that, and that's unfortunate.
Yes.
But the Pace kept going. The kids are still participating. And I guess, Councilman Hug, you said it exactly right. I don't know what we're arguing about today, all these insults to each other, and adults here on the council. This is about the kids. I mean, this is about how can we make sure all these kids can still be involved in this sport? And I can't believe a whole bunch of adults is going to fight over how many board members there are and what color of skin they might have on the board. You know what? We want to make sure that the children are able to play and that we have people from all over the community that are involved like we do. And I just wanted to know what your thoughts were on that, and tell us how we can best make sure that the kids are able to participate from both. I know it started in South Omaha, but it's expanded into North Omaha. A lot of kids from North Omaha, so it's serving really the whole eastern side of our city. And I think there's even kids that want to play from other areas that are able to play if they don't have the resources.
That is correct.
Do you want to expand on that?
Yes, ma'am. And I just want to say, thank you, Councilman Hug, for stealing my thunder and getting my head, reading my mind, because I was exactly going to say that this is not about what color my skin is or what color the president's skin is, or who the executive director of this board is. This is not about one individual person. It's not about a group of people other than our underprivileged children. That's all that matters here. And Councilman Amy Melton, just like you said, we need to focus on the kids, not on what color you are or I am not. To Deputy Chief Martinez, he was my mentor. I came up under him, just like I came up under Chief Warren, but guess what? I came up under Chief Kangar as well. Does it matter what color their skin is? Absolutely not. Do we want to have equal representation within the community that we serve? Yes, we do. But at the current moment, we have what we have. And what we have is a strong board that is committed to serving the community that needs it. Just like my badge says, Omaha. It doesn't say north. It doesn't say south, east, west, or anything. It says Omaha. Pace is about serving the children that need it. It doesn't matter what color of skin you are. It doesn't matter where you come from. I'm not even from Omaha, and I am putting everything that I have into the Omaha community, because this is a community that I have committed myself to serving. And we have a board. If it's four members, hopefully we'll get it up to full strength. And yes, I would love to have someone from the South Omaha community. But to throw out verbiage such as ethnic cleansing, I think that is a far stretch for what we're trying to do. We are trying to serve underprivileged children. And if we can do that, if we can save one, just as I mentioned before in my other presentation for the sake of time, Deputy Chief Kangar, just like I can, can tell you how many children, where we have pulled out one child where their siblings, their cousins were in a gang lifestyle, criminal activity, or whatever. But we were able to pull that one away from it, and now that child is a success. They didn't care what color our skin was. All they mattered was that we were mentoring them, that we were giving them options, and we were showing them what it's like to succeed and telling them that you too can do it. You too can succeed. You don't have to follow a criminal lifestyle, because that's where your family has gone traditionally. So we're very passionate about it, yes, ma'am.
I know you are, and that's why, sorry, I asked you to come up. Chief Kangar, I appreciate your passion too, but I also, I knew how much you've been involved with Pace and how much it means to you. And you're one of the Omaha Police Officers that truly serves our community for their job, but then spends all the extra time, volunteer time, because you care. You spend your own time.
I spend my own time, and just so that the board is aware, I was a member of the Latino Peace Officers Association, just like I was a member of the Black Police Officers Association. So it does not matter. We are focusing too much on skin color.
Well, you know what? I am confident in the leadership of this current board. Fully believe in you, in Omaha Sports. I mean, what you're doing, Lindsay, Chief Kangar, I know you're going to add some more people, but your focus is going to be on serving the kids and making sure the kids are getting what they need. And I think when we see that, we're going to be able to fund more. But because of that, you're going to get funding from the rest of the community. As we've just seen over this last weekend, the generosity of the citizens of Omaha, support for our police officers who are doing so much good, expanding it to include fire, I think would be great. That's how we want to expand this, is get more volunteers and more people that can serve the kids. So I have a lot of faith in you and what you've done because of your past and then the rest of your board and Chief Kangar.
And until we fully staff our board members, ma'am, let it be known that if there's anyone within the North Omaha community or South Omaha community, if they want to have, they want to get out and interact with the children, they are more than welcome to come out and coach. There's no better way for the South Omaha community or any community to become involved with Pace and to be a good mentor to a community, be it North Omaha, be it South Omaha, than to come out to your own community and volunteer your time. All you need is come out, and if you want to learn how to coach. When I learned how to coach, I didn't know how to coach. Someone had to teach me. We will teach you how to coach. So if you live in South Omaha, you want to come coach soccer, by all means. Mr. or Mrs. Community Member, you're more than welcome to come join us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't spoken yet, so I'm going to take that opportunity, and I think there may be some additional lights too. And then I'll ask for a motion here sometime soon. As Councilman Hug mentioned, I feel strongly about this program too. I initiated the first city budget amendment that provided financial funding for Pace in addition to the police department's partnership and the partnership with our parks departments. I felt that was important in 2017. And I think it did prove important because it attracted additional private donations because the city had financial skin in the game, and that was a very important thing for us to demonstrate. So I do support restoring the program. I think that's very important right now. Tomorrow is May 1st. We're talking about summer programming for these kids, 4,000 kids. Hugely important. We do that right now. My preference would be $100,000 too, back to 2022 levels. I would consider more than 2022 levels like we did in 2023. That money was never fully realized to the organization, but I didn't feel $126,000 was too much for a program like this that has great returns, not just with kids and families, but with police community relations too. I guess I find some encouragement that the mayor is saying $100,000 is likely this year. That's how I took those remarks. I would certainly count on that occurring from my perspective. I have confidence that what's going to happen next is that we will prove some results and get this back on track. So I would look forward to supporting that again this fall, if in fact the $50,000 is approved today. I would consider that the first $50,000 renewal of the city's recommitment. And I have already received messages from private donors saying, thank you for initiating this conversation publicly and for when it got back on the agenda today. Because I think they are waiting for this to happen before they're going to also participate as partners going forward. I actually do think the diversity conversation we had earlier was very important, and that is very important for the Omaha Sports Commission to demonstrate. I think Mr. Kangar demonstrated that in his remarks. So I feel like that was addressed at this juncture, but I do think that's very important, that the community be reflected with this board and with the organization going forward. That's been its roots, and that's why it's been so successful, I think. Lindsay, maybe a question for you. As the Executive Director, so the current status is Pace has come to an agreement, and I think contracted with the Sports Committee as private entities to run this program. That's not even the question today for us. That has occurred, and you are now the Executive Director of the Sports Commission. Are you confident if we take action today that you can provide full programming for all these kids this summer, realizing it's just about May 1st?
Yes, I believe that funding here will be a big stepping stone for us in acquiring funds, as you previously mentioned, Councilman Festerson, of other funding coming into us to additionally be supportive of the programming that we'll have rolling out here. So please know that between the Omaha Sports Commission and Omaha Sports Commission's Board, who was very, very supportive of our joint efforts with Pace and the Pace Board, that we are providing as many opportunities as possible for the kids that we are serving, because the kids are our focus right now.
And I want to say, in regards to city funding, we have the capability of doing this. It's true, it was not budgeted in 2024. But in our last Finance Committee meeting, we talked with the Finance Director about the first quarter results of our budget in 2024. Sales tax alone is $10 million ahead of where we budgeted at this juncture. And that's only one quarter of the year, but I think that gives a sense of our capabilities to fund something like $100,000 and our ability to do that with whatever it takes in terms of a resolution or an amendment to a budget this year. So I'm not concerned about it from that perspective. Thanks, Lindsay. I appreciate it. The last thing I think I'd mention, and there are a couple more lights. I know we have a couple of former board members that are with us today in the audience, and I do want to thank them for all their work. They've led this organization through some really tough times in the last year, kept it afloat, because they believe in this mission too, and I don't want that to go unsaid. We wouldn't be here today even talking about it if it hadn't been kept afloat for the last year, year and a half. So my thanks go to them, and I'm confident if we take this measure today, we can get it back on track. And it is time to move on, and it's time to move on on behalf of the kids. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks. I think I need to correct something, and Mr. Hug, I think, pointed out. When I said something about, I believe I may have inaccurately said in 2022 that it was $50,000. I had in my notes here that it was $100,000. So when I was saying we were going to get to previous funding levels of other years, I was talking about that $100,000 level, and as you pointed out too, Pete, that $126,000 that was budgeted last year was not expended because of the issues. But, you know, it's interesting. I think Ron hit it right on the head. I mean, we got it kind of, I guess my comments, I assume that we were talking about the kids. And that's exactly what we're here to talk about, is the kids. And actually, it was, the reason I put my light back on was not only that, but then when Mr. Begley used the phrase that those that were responsible really for sinking this ship and tarnishing the reputation, when he said that they were currently paying the price for their actions. And it was, it got me to thinking, it's the kids who are paying, they're the ones paying the price. And that's, again, I appreciate Ron bringing that up, because in Anna and her passion, I think that's what's really important here, is that we need to be making those investments in the kids. And again, that's where, when I was talking about how this can leverage, and I think Lindsay just touched on that, and Pete, you touched on it too, is that the community, the philanthropic and charitable communities are looking for the investment of the city and the commitment of the city to, you know, to kind of bring this program out of the ashes. We've got two of the board members here today of the four. And the passion and the commitment and the drive we've seen demonstrated by these two that are here today, and I know the other two are on par with the two that are represented here today. I am so confident that with their drive and determination that this program will not only reach the levels that it was at prior to the ills that came upon it, but exceed where they were before, and they'll continue to grow and make it even. More kids will be, more kids will be able to participate in it. And then lastly, to Pete, I noticed that some of the board members were here as well today. And you're right, had they not stuck through the hard times, Lance and Tyler and some of the others, had they not stuck through those tough times, we probably wouldn't even be having this conversation today. So thank you for sticking it out through some hard times that I know we're, I know running it. I've known Lance for a long time, and would run into him and know it weighed heavily on him and appreciate his commitment to sticking through it and making sure that it got to a point where we are today, and we can pick up those pieces and move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to bring it back to some of the numbers. Because my concern might be that $50,000, is it really going to impact the operation of Pace? I looked at, I pulled up the Form 990 over the weekend, and in '21, we had total revenue of $1.4 million. And in '22, they reported $2.4 million in total revenue. And I understand that the operation is completely different today. Staffing is completely different. But I think it's important for us to note, as the mayor said, this is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and this $50,000 is really seed money for the board to go out and do their job. Their job is to go out and secure funding from philanthropy, from sponsorships, from things that they can do. And that's how they can impact, as well as coach kids. I know that's important. But they also need, $50,000 isn't going to get the job done. It does, it pays for three staff people for the summer at $25 an hour, including benefits. So we're not kidding ourselves. That's not the issue. The issue is, can this $50,000 be leveraged to, as Mr. Harding said, $3.000.4? Can it be $4.4 million? Whatever the board can get done, that's what we need to be focused on, on the numbers side. I get the social side. I get coaching kids. I want to do that too. But we've got to be able to make it sustainable so that it can work. The balance sheet shows assets of almost $2 million that Pace owns. And sure, that's not cash. It's not spendable, but there are assets there. It is a viable organization. We just need to reinvest and revitalize and get a quality board in place that can make that kind of thing happen. And I think we can do that. In fact, I know we can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to be real crystal clear in my words today if maybe they were misconstrued. I am 100% in support of what the work is that's being put into this for the kids that were impacted by what happened at Pace. We're rebranding this, and I am in full support, Mr. Kangar. Thank you for your efforts here, and I know it's a tough process to rebuild, but that's what we are doing here today. So I want to be clear about that. It is about getting the kids and the people in the community to support what the goal is here, and is to get kids outreach and get them mentors and get them programs of structure with people that are trusted in the community, that can give them the care they need, the guidance they need, the mentoring they need going forward. So again, that's why I'm supporting this today. Council President Festerson mentioned people in the community are reaching out, wanting to financially support this. So I'm looking forward to this getting built back up with your guidance and people in the community that want to help. I think that's important, that when you look around, who is here today or who has reached out to you, I'm sure you've heard from a lot of people that want to help and get this ship in the right direction. And this is a step that we're taking today that I'm supporting to do that. And I'll look forward to doing more and all I can to support it. But I wanted to be clear on the record for that point. Thanks, Mr. President.
Motion in a second. Mr. Hug, was your light on? Okay. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
We have Ben here that's standing, waiting, and he has a few more comments that he'd like to make. I'd like to recognize that.
Ben Salazar, 1703 Ontario. Yeah, let me just.
Ben, one second. I need to declare.
That was done intentionally, Ron.
I need to clarify. Hey, order, please. I need to clarify a point of parliamentary nature. Madam Clerk, there was a motion a second to approve. Can there be further dialogue?
Did you call, did you ask for roll call?
I did not. Okay, Ms. Johnson, the floor is yours, and you recognize Mr. Salazar and Mr. Salazar.
Oh, thank you. Just to to provide some info on South Omaha, at the present time, on children's sports, kid's sports, Greg Perea, Greg Perea, P-E-R-E-A, has been very active with youth sports for the last five or six years, OLG Classic Sports. He runs a year-round clinic for kids playing baseball between the ages of four to 14, I believe. The community has come out strongly in support of Greg and his efforts. He's got about 150 kids playing ball right now, but here's what the city should know. Last week, Greg and his crew, his crew, his workers from his plumbing company were out at Spring Lake Park fixing the baseball field out there on their own time, on their own dime. And they're doing this because they can't get access to Brown Park and Christie Heights. These are the kids in South Omaha who don't have a place to play ball because they can't afford it. They both charge money to practice on and to play on. It's outrageous. The kids in South Omaha have two great fields that they can't access, they can't play ball on. The the community is trying to help Greg and his kids. Now, he's going to grow that that game and the baseball league that they're playing in. I don't know, and it hasn't been said definitively from the present board at PACE, whether or not they're going to have baseball this year. But if they're not, Greg has promised to do what he can to pick up the kids that are not going to be playing baseball, not soccer, baseball with PACE. That's a huge issue, a huge issue. The community has met several times in South Omaha at the GI Forum, and they've been talking about helping Greg and his kids for baseball. It's not soccer, this is baseball. So I don't know if you all can answer, I'd like to know on behalf of the community, is there going to be baseball at PACE? Thank you.
This question is for the Parks Department. Is there a cost to go to Miller Park or any other park, especially in underprivileged neighborhoods?
Jake Lender, Omaha Parks Department. If it's a field that is, you know, that you need to pay for, then yes, but there's there's several fields that there is no charge to play. And I, we have lots of them.
So do we have neighborhoods where they're underprivileged, a great majority of that community is underprivileged, and we have parks where we are charging a cost for those individuals to participate in those parks?
There are, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. There was a motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you for your testimony.
Items six through eight can be considered together for Woodbrook West, located northwest of 182nd and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from HE District to R4 District. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plan. Item eight, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items six, seven, and eight are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of council. John Coolidge with Lamprey Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska, here on behalf of the applicant. Woodbrook West Phase Two is 160 lots of 190-lot subdivision located northwest of 180th and Fort, and the site's graded and public improvements have been approved, so we're ready to start construction and look forward to your approval today. Here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion a second. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items nine and 10 can be considered together for property located at 3002 Paddock Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from R6 District to R7 District. Item 10, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUD overlay district.
Public hearing and vote on nine and 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is just one 33-unit building that's being added to an apartment complex at Paddock Road, that the original construction was in 1967, so this is just an addition to the existing apartment complex. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved, second.
There's a motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cuss any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Council members, and item number 14 has been requested to come off consent, so a council member may abstain. So first I'll call up the public hearings, that the public hearings on items 11 through 13 and 15 through 18 were held on April 23rd. Is there a motion on those items?
Move to approve 11 through 13 and 15 through 18.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14 is an ordinance to approve the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Association 2024-2025 Budget and Work Plan and levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within the BID.
Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yeah.
Yep, abstain. Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Johnson, abstains.
The public hearings on agenda items 19 through 42 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item member you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items 19 through 42. Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
Move the approval.
There's a motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 44, a resolution to approve the 2023 Tax Increment Financing Annual Report.
The public hearing and vote on number 44 is today. We've asked Ms. Hadley from the Planning Department to give a brief overview of this 2023 Tax Increment Financing Annual Report, and then we'll take proponents and opponents.
Good afternoon, Bridgette Hadley, City Planning Department. This image will be left up here because it will be talked about, touched on throughout this presentation. I wanted to take a moment to provide a little more understanding about TIF. It's been talked about a lot, lots of questions have come up, and talk about how it's used in Omaha before I share some highlights of the annual report. TIF, which is authorized in the state of Nebraska, is used as an incentive to encourage the private sector to partner with the city of Omaha, to engage in community redevelopment and economic development within community redevelopment areas. Now, while there is information on our website to help people understand TIF, I thought I would describe it in this manner, and you'll hear some terms used repeatedly to hopefully drive home some points. TIF essentially is a reimbursement of a portion of the property tax payment made by the project owner, which goes back to the project owner or the lender to pay for construction debt already incurred. How TIF works in Omaha could be likened to a rebate in most cases. Those of us who have shopped and received a rebate realize that you make a purchase, expend some dollars, then you submit a form that demonstrates you've spent some dollars, and then a portion of that money is sent back to you. Likewise with TIF, and in that, the project owner, after going through an extensive vetting process, including the TIF approval process, completes the construction associated with the property, which is the TIF redevelopment project plan that you all approve often, and pays that, pays to the Douglas County Treasurer the full real estate tax that was assessed by the county. The county treasurer will send only that portion, that is the TIF, and that is also the newly generated tax revenue, which is what you see here in this blue area, also known as the excess abolum tax. And that results from the construction progress or construction completion of the proposed project plan. And these little images are trying to demonstrate, you know, the process or the progress of construction. The TIF is received by the city finance department, which then determines who the TIF dollars go to. The TIF redevelopment promissory note that the city creates tells us to whom to send the TIF dollars. In most cases, the project owner has secured a construction loan from a bank and must pay back that loan it incurred to construct the project. The TIF is what reimburses the project for debt already incurred. The proof that we have what the project owner proposed and has executed on in its proposal is the construction progress or completion, which is evidenced oftentimes by me driving around and doing my site visits and drive-bys. I think this is also part of the issue with this term. The word financing in the TIF increment financing does imply financing. However, it is not the type of financing that you and I are accustomed to, such as when we finance a car or finance a house. In those instances, there is a repayment to the source or the lender that must occur. In the case with TIF, with the city of Omaha, the city acts as a facilitator, not a lender. The TIF redevelopment promissory note simply allows the city to capture or collect the TIF, and again, that's this in here, represented by the blue, capture or collect the TIF, which, as I mentioned, that is sent by the county treasurer to the city finance department, which then forwards that, those TIF dollars to the lender, as I had stated before. The city is not taking anyone else's TIF or tax dollars, rather, to help pay back a loan that was incurred by the project owner. The city is not obligated to pay the debt service on the construction loan to the bank if the project hasn't generated any TIF, meaning nothing has happened here because no construction has happened. As previously stated, the city's role is simply to capture and collect that portion of the new tax revenue generated by the construction progress or completion of the project, and then forward those TIF dollars to the entity on the TIF redevelopment promissory note, and again, that's typically a bank. In the development financing space, what I've described is called the developer-financed method, or pay-as-you-go. In this method, the developer or project owner is completely responsible for putting together their capital stack, which is the complete array of funding sources that it will take to fund or finance the entire project. And you will note that these sources are listed in the sources and uses table of the TIF application. The local municipality, in this case, the city of Omaha, does not give or lend any money upfront to the project. Keep in mind that the newly-generated tax revenue would not exist had this level and scope of project not been proposed by the project owner, approved by the city, and then completed. So if the project project never gets off the ground, meaning it never commences, there would be no tax revenues generated. Thus, there would be no tax revenues for the city to capture or collect or receive, be received by the the county. In other words, no obligation by the city to reimburse anyone, not a bank, not the project owner. If there were new tax revenues generated by the project, again, in this blue area, as a result of a project moving forward and in completion, those newly taxed revenues paid by the project owner to the county treasurer, then the to the city will capture those dollars and forward them to the holder of the TIF redevelopment promissory note. And because the project sources include construction loans, the city will forward the new tax revenues to the lender or the bank that helped the project owner construct that project. So again, this model is a model that is used across the country to help explain how TIF is used. It's generally the same case across the country. It is fully the responsibility of the project owner to construct and complete the proposed project. The risks of financing, construction, leasing, repayment of the debt, et cetera, are on the project owner and not on any of the political subdivisions. As the project is being constructed, the valuation of the real estate should increase. The county assessors will determine the new value of that property as the construction advances to the point of completion and through the period of stabilization where the project is basically leased up and fully occupied. With all that said, we cannot lose sight of the fact that TIF is used as a tool in the bigger picture of community redevelopment and economic development. Community redevelopment because we are using the tool to revitalize neighborhood and business communities, often within the heart of our city's business improvement districts, and then economic development because we are using the tool to encourage and incentivize businesses to invest and or reinvest in the local economy, to create and or retain jobs, and to bring their technology, their goods and services to the local economy. So I just wanted to give that primer to go in deep, and it's now public record, so anybody can push play to re-listen to this in the future. I will move now to just cover highlights of the TIF report that is in your package, highlighting.
Highlights would be good.
Yeah. So the TIF program in 2023, and then highlights of a few performance measures. So in 2023, there were 23 projects that were approved, and you can see the summary of the program activity on pages four through six of the of the report. That represents about 129 million in TIF loans and just over a billion in total project investments. And there's also a map with a list of all the projects on pages eight through 13. The types of projects that were approved are housing, mixed-use, commercial, industrial. And as a result of the proposed projects, the city leveraged TIF to get a commitment of approximately $49 million in public infrastructure improvement, improvement work. This is one of the first uses of TIF in in the history of TIF in Nebraska, and so it's very important to mention this as a point of leverage. In terms of blighted areas, there's approximately 21.8% of the city's total acres that are blighted, and that compares to about the same amount in the prior year. In terms of affordable housing, first, there were 2,642 housing units that were proposed by the projects that were approved last year. A majority of those were apartment units, about 2,521 units. 131, excuse me, 133 units were proposed as affordable housing units, which now is up to about 240 units, mostly due to low-income housing tax credits. In the urban core, there were four new TIF projects that were approved, and those you'll see on page eight, on the map on page eight. Three were in the influence area, one was in the streetcar. In terms of paid off or matured TIF projects, that's on page 17 of the report. In totality, the city of Omaha, from the inception of this program, has 213 TIF projects that have paid off or matured. So that's over at least 40, 40, maybe closer to 50 years of us doing this project. So while we have 261 active TIFs, there's at least 213 that have paid off. So that's, every year, we're seeing projects that pay off. 16 of those projects paid off last year. The base value of those projects was about $10 million. Those 16 projects achieved an increase in valuation of $101 million as of January 1st of this year. So this represents 1,057% increase over the base valuation. Those 16 TIF projects should generate an additional $2.2 million in property tax revenues now that the TIF term has expired and those tax revenues flow to the taxing jurisdiction. and those tax revenues flow to the taxing jurisdictions. Lastly, on page 18, there's a what-if analysis where we try to just address if there was no TIF involved or very little development that occurred. We use the city's historic growth rates from the City Finance Department. And the results show that only a 35% increase over the base assessed value and tax revenues would have occurred, would have occurred. So that means the property valuation increases would have been nearly 3 million without TIF versus an actual 101 million with TIF. The property tax revenues generated would have been approximately 75,000 without TIF and 2.2 million with TIF. I am going to skip over the active because that's in the report. I would just say the decision to approve the TIF projects often results in a much larger increase in the tax base, which benefits the city, the county, and other taxing jurisdictions as well as citizens. Because the projects are helping to fulfill the city's comprehensive plan, various redevelopment plans, and the city's goals of community redevelopment and economic development, the TIF projects help to make the City of Omaha a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. And this document obviously is attached to our public documents for the meeting today, but where else can one find it if you want to see it?
Everyone can go to the city's TIF website. So if you just Google tax increment financing Omaha, you will find the report. It is now out there on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? If you want to speak as an opponent, you may.
Louis T. Manes, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Great presentation. Glad that we're finding different ways to describe TIF financing, which is basically a mortgage on our future. And people don't appreciate that, that the local public bodies are not going to benefit until later on. So that's why I say that foundations associated with public bodies need to be supported so that they can recoup some of the money today, this year, next year. I think that the TIF financing needs to be a tool, because you're not going to get rid of it. It's come from the state. It needs to be a tool in your box for redevelopment. And I've been waiting since I heard Councilmember Melton say that you guys as a legislative body was, were going to up, come up with incentives for redevelopment besides going after property taxes as a financing tool. This was a, I, I remember some things, not always, but specifically what I heard was that you guys were going to come up with a incentive for redevelopment outside of the TIF financing. I think that's smart. And later on in your meeting, you're going to get a presentation to do with a comprehensive plan. So some things are moving. But to do TIF year after year and not assume a cap is not smart. I think that either the state or yourselves should impose a cap because the TIF eligible financing items aren't all about infrastructure. You've got paying or reimbursing property, an acquisition, for example. Okay, so why does TIF have to finance an acquisition? Whether the developer went after TIF or not, an acquisition of a property needs to happen.
I'm going to have you summarize, Louise. I think we understand your point.
You understand my point? Okay, which is?
I mean, have you summarized, please?
Okay, so my point is that I'm not opposed to you approving this report, but I think that you guys need to be approving more than reports. You need to be approving ways to redevelop that you guys come up with, like setups and.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and, or.
We're becoming a bit repetitive. We've heard that a few times, I think. I'll give you one more chance to summarize, then you're done.
Okay, okay, or talk to the legislature about giving you more authority because I'm going to talk to the legislature about the TIF. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'll try to be brief today. I'm usually against everything TIF. But I'd like to pose a few questions that might help clear the remaining foggy answers that I keep getting. Number one, it seems to me, as I drive around Omaha and look at these projects, an awful lot of them are also real estate companies. And it makes me wonder when I go past it after the project is done and people are moving in and I see the real estate sign out there, the things for rent with one of the developers' names on that's been down here many times. And I keep wondering, well, is this kind of like buy low, pay, sell high and escape the property tax because the new owner will pay that higher property tax, not the guy that got TIF in the first place? Or, well, close to me in Dundee there, it's blighted area. Coming Street to Hamilton is pretty much on that blighted thing. So if somebody tells down, tears down the Kelly Bowl and builds a multi-use apartment building and we can no longer see the skyline, that, you're assuring me that that doesn't raise my property tax? Not because project, I don't directly pay them. But all this time during the 15 years, the 20 years, when the school district gets the, keeps the lower value, they lose money. When the period of that time ends, they supposedly reap windfall. How's that happen? I don't quite comprehend that. And yes, it might raise the value of my property because I live across the street from it. It doesn't raise my tax because I live across the street from it, only because it raises the value of that area. And then along comes the taxi guy and says, oh, house across the street sold for 400,000. We're raising your property tax assessments to the approximate same rate that that property went for. So please clear up. Does the property, the homeowner escape property tax increases because of TIF? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
I just wanted to quickly say thank you for this report. I would suggest anybody read it if they want more information. And I will make it, I will print it out myself. If anybody wants a hard copy, I'll, I'll print it out for you. Thank you for all your, your effort and, and work that you put into this because it gives the facts and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just give a short observation to, of the 23 projects in 2023, 13 were housing. In my perspective, that's good. I think we all have an interest in finding out ways to address affordable housing throughout the community. But I would also observe that of those 13 projects, so 2,642 units, but 413 of those were considered affordable. So we have a lot of work to do. And I know this is a very small, probably part of that picture, but I think it needs to be part of that picture when we talk about our affordable housing action plan and TIF as a part of that and some of the recommendations that are in there and I think being considered by those task forces. So that's my observation about the report that I think is important.
I'll move to approve the report.
Motion to second. Roe call.
Roe, vaguely, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 45, in ordinance to acquire private property for the Signal Infrastructure Phase E2 project.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 46, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for the hill located northeast of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial.
Public hearing on number 46 is today. A note for council members, we forgot to address this in the morning meeting, but it is a recommendation to deny from the planning department, which require five votes of the council to make a different decision. And I think we'll talk about that here in a minute. First, we'll take proponents. Mr. Jovan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer of the Hill Development. We're seeking an amendment to increase the 12% area limitation on freestanding fast food restaurants under the Omaha Municipal Code, the zoning code. In particular, it's 55-564 C2. And I think the intent of the master plan and then, which was codified in that particular section of the code, was really to eliminate fast food row. So you didn't want 10 fast food restaurants in one shopping center or one particular development. And this particular development, you'll see here in a minute, has very unique characteristics that I think we can support what we're seeking here today because I don't think it offends the master plan. And I think too, for every rule, there should be an exception. And I think this is one of those cases that there should be an exception. I don't think it creates any precedent that would be used in the future that doesn't have similar type facts and circumstances. And if someone else comes in with the similar facts and circumstances, well, then maybe they should be approved too. So just so you kind of get a lay of the land here, this is State Street, 168th Street. And what you'll notice here, this is the mixed-use development right here. And then I'll talk about this creek and drainage way that's in this location here. What you'll notice is, first of all, the intersection, we have the triangles, right, for the mixed-use areas. The triangle at 168th and State is a 60-acre mixed-use center, which means quarter mile in all directions, up to 60 acres, could be zoned or utilized for commercial, mixed-use, retail, office-type uses, right? Well, the southeast corner, the southwest corner, and the northwest corner are all developed as residential developments today. So they will never be mixed-use. So you have a 60-acre mixed-use center that really is focused only on the northeast corner. This is the Hill subdivision. So there's really not ever going to be 60 acres of mixed-use in this particular location. So what we're seeking to do is, if you could, if this drainage way wasn't here, you could have had up to 20 acres of a mixed-use area on the hillside, the northeast corner of the intersection. But because of the creek area, the area that can actually be developed for commercial mixed-use is only 9.78 acres. So you're now under 10 acres on a 60-acre intersection. And so what we're trying to do here is, and here's the proposed mixed-use development. What we're trying to do is increase the 12% limitation on fast food restaurants up to 19.3%. And the only reason why is to provide for two fast food restaurants in this location. So it seems kind of odd to have one fast food restaurant to serve the entire demand of this entire area. And so the idea is if we can get to 19.3%, we can have at least two lots that are shown here as fast food restaurants. And so we think this will better serve the community. And, and again, because of the unique characteristics here, number one, the other three corners are already developed for residential uses. No opportunity for mixed-use. Because of the, the drainage way, the significant drainage way that runs through the hill, you don't have a whole lot of area to develop for commercial mixed-use. And so what we're really looking at is Lot 3998 is only 0.88 acres and Lot 401 is 1.01 acres. So you're only talking about a total fast food restaurants of the 9.78 acres of 1.89 acres. So this is a relatively insignificant thing. And I think it's a very odd and unique set of circumstances and facts involving this particular development. And to me, that doesn't seem to, in my view, offend the master plan or offend the Section 55, 564 of the code regarding the 12% area limitation on fast food restaurants. And the reason why is I don't think two fast food restaurants in this particular location is, is a bad thing. In fact, I think it's a good thing. I think the public would like to have choices when they come to this particular corner and you only have less than 10 acres of a mixed-use center. So with that, we respectfully request the approval of the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement outstanding the recommendation report of the planning department and the planning board for that matter. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, and I have one quick question.
Sure.
If you were to consider the creek as part of the development area, would that change the percentage?
Well, the only, the problem I think with that is is that that creek area is within an outlot and the outlot zone DR and not MU. So I'm not sure it would go into the calculus.
I meant just technically.
Oh, technically? Yeah, sure.
Right, like if we just drew the box.
Yeah.
And counted it, it would be less than 12%.
For sure it would be.
And you can't develop the creek area. So I, I'm just, for my own, I don't, planning is going, Amy, that's not how you do things. Right? Okay, I get it.
But I like where you're.
Dave is going to be going.
I like where you're going.
That's why I didn't ask Dave that question. I, I was just curious as to if I'm looking at space and area because the point of the master plan was to not have too many in there. You can't develop that area because it's DR and it's waterway.
That's correct.
So I'm just saying that we're not offending, I think, the, the, I think you said the spirit of the master plan in this particular case because of the, kind of the uniqueness of the corner.
And so mixed-use zoning is zoning by contract. And so if this was a base district zoning, this would be a site regulator, if you will. And you could go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a waiver. Well, in the mixed-use arena, you can't get a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals because it's zoning by contract. So you're required to get an amendment to the mixed-use development agreement. I would say if, if you went to the Zoning Board of Appeals and you argued that there was a practical difficulty or a hardship, why? Because there's this huge drainage way that substantially and significantly reduces the area of this particular development that could be used for mixed-use that the Zoning Board of Appeals might very well grant that type of a waiver because I think this is a practical difficulty or hardship. You can also see the irregular shape of the mixed-use area as well because of the drainage way. I mean, it's just narrow at the top and it gets wide at the bottom. So there, there's a lot of things going on with this particular development and the request here that I think is unique enough and the facts and circumstances, I think, support this.
The only reason I bring that up, this is, is in my district. I actually think if you only had one fast food place, you'd actually kind of be giving that fast food place a monopoly. And you're also not giving all of those other people that live around there any choice whatsoever.
That's correct.
So I, I actually, this is one where I believe the people that live around it would want to have two choices, especially for that many, that many houses in that development. But this is what I would like to do, though. I know that there's a couple of council people that may be gone next week. I would, since this is in my district, I would like to lay this over. I would like to make a motion to lay this over. I know there's a light on. I just want to make the motion to lay it over to May 14.
Motion to second to lay it over to May 14. Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Yeah, I, I made the same comments at our planning committee meeting this morning and I got thrown out of the room. But I'm, I'm curious, has the developer identified what other kind of businesses would be on, you know, like face-running would be on, you know, like face running or back running onto State Street?
Yes, there's a, there's a chart. It's very small. Um, I typically have a magnifying glass when I'm at the office, but.
The main they're showing is commercial.
Yeah, it's commercial, office, multi-tenant, there's fast food, commercial, commercial, fast food, and commercial. So just general retail, you know, could be any number of uses that fall within the permitted, uh, uses under the mixed-use zoning, um, under our code. There's also conditional and special uses under our code as well, under the mixed-use zoning classification. So it could be really any one of those types of permitted and/or conditional or special uses that could be, you know, within this particular development. I think the thought was, um, rather than just have one fast food restaurant, let's have a little choice for people that are coming to this particular area, especially with the number of residential, um, developments around here. I think that there'll be high demand for that type of use. So that's the idea.
Thank you. I'll support the motion in a second, too. I, I think it's important to have the council member from the district, uh, in this discussion and also to have a full council weigh in on the recommendations. So there are no further lights. Real call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item forty-seven, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Omaha by Design for the Omaha Comprehensive Plan Update. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number forty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. I'll keep this brief because we're almost done. Um, so the professional services agreement in front of you today for public hearing is for, uh, non, nonprofit partner team supporting us on our public engagement for the comprehensive plan update. Uh, we've done this on a smaller scale, um, in the past, uh, but never at the citywide scale, using, uh, utilizing not, our nonprofit partners. Other communities have done this. Uh, Memphis, um, recently completed their comprehensive plan and they had a very similar model and it worked very well. Uh, speaking to the procurement process, we advertised this RFP through Douglas County Purchasing on March thirteenth. Uh, over three hundred entities were notified through their system. Twenty actually reviewed the RFP. Uh, proposals were due on March twenty-seventh. Uh, one proposal was submitted by Omaha by Design, Spark, Elevate Omaha, and LEDC, which many of them are here. One had to leave because they had another appointment to get to. Uh, the proposal itself scored, um, very high on the criteria that we had set for the RFP, so we're happy about that. On a broader scale, uh, the comp plan process will, um, with approval of this next week, hopefully, um, will start next month and we'll go through, um, the end of two thousand and twenty-six. The public engagement, um, and utilizing our nonprofit partners will actually be this year and next year. Um, another item of note, um, we have submitted a couple of grants to our philanthropic community, to, to a couple of foundations. We submitted a HUD grant. We were still hearing, waiting to hear back on that. And we're looking at some other, um, uh, funding opportunities, um, in the future to help offset this. So that, the amount that's in the agreement, that actually, um, will come down if those grants are successful. Uh, but we just wanted to keep it that level so we wouldn't have to come back to council for approval. Um, having said all that, this is a major milestone in the process. A lot of great work by our comprehensive plan team, Lindsay and Sydney, uh, who you have all met. Um, so we're excited to, to move forward and get this launched. And, uh, uh, we mentioned it before in some of the briefings, but, um, it's been a long time since we updated our comprehensive plan and, um, Omaha is very different today than it was in the nineteen nineties. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Well, good afternoon. Um, Scott Dobby, Omaha by Design, six eighteen South Eleventh Street. Really excited to be here with you all this afternoon and thank you for your time. You know, because this effort is more than just an opportunity to co-create, um, this comprehensive plan. Uh, it's not only a guide to this city's physical growth and development and public investment, but it is also a community-wide opportunity to set a new standard in the way that we do public planning and public participation in planning. Community engagement of this scale and depth represents an unprecedented opportunity to build an inclusive vision for Omaha's future. Reaching this promise will really take a true partnership between the city and the community. And if you know us, I hope you know that Omaha by Design is really built for just such a role. We serve the Omaha, as the Omaha Metro's nonprofit hub for people-centered urban design and policy. We are a nonpartisan and trusted actor that builds bridges between the public, the private sector, and local government, all in pursuit of a vision of a more vibrant and livable city for all. Most importantly, partnership and community engagement have always been at the heart of Omaha by Design's work because we know that thriving cities are built with many hands. We were eager to respond to the city's call for a nonprofit, uh, lead to assist in this community-wide effort. And knowing that our true strength lies in collaboration and collaborative partnerships, our first step was to open conversations with a team of community organizations whom we are proud to stand here with today. Uh, we've got Bowie and Nikki and, uh, Itzel Lopez of LEDC, uh, had a lead, but, uh, Spark and Elevate Omaha do wonderful things and really, uh, supplement and augment Omaha by Design's team in ways with skills that we do not have and that we need if we're going to reach the community, if we're going to go to your districts, engage with your constituents, and bring them all in this process of making a plan in a way we've never had the opportunity to make. Um, as, as Derek mentioned, it's been a long time in the works. Uh, it goes back more than thirty years, the last time we, as a city, came together to really shape this kind of a vision. So, to, in closing there, I guess, I just want to say that, uh, thank you for your time and, and together, uh, we really know that we can co-create and co-deliver a robust public engagement process that results in a plan that feels like it was created by the whole community, because it was. Thank you, and I'm obviously here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, um, council members for having me up here. Bowie Ray Tutte, five zero zero three California Street, um, the CEO of Spark. Um, and Spark focuses on holistic development. And holistic development means a million things to a million people and a million groups. But one of the most powerful aspects of, um, any holistic economic development is advocacy. Um, I am, as I said, uh, prior, uh, to my visit to the city council, I'm an immigrant to the United States, but grew up in North Omaha. Um, so, so I've lived in, um, Omaha longer I lived in South Sudan. And a part of the thing that I missed, um, or that I value in the United States that I missed back at home is the power of advocacy because policy makes, um, makes, what was it? Makes our country great. And one of the things that I attended one of our, um, community member, or community meetings, and Willie Barney mentioned that, our community focuses on what happened twenty years ago rather than focusing on what happens twenty years from now. I think he used thirty years, but for the context of the comprehensive plan, I use twenty years. So whatever's going on back there, just redact and make it work. Um, but, and I tru, that truly hit home with me. And when I heard about the comprehensive plan, I reached out to, um, Scott and I reached out to the city and saying that our community, um, and, and our people need to have a voice in here and in this process. And they were gracious enough to invite us to the table and have this discussion. Um, I'm strongly in pro, or in support of this and hopefully it goes well.
Thank you. Other proponents? Don't be shy. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Nikki Clark, and my pronouns are she/her. And I'm the executive director at Elevate Omaha, one of the partners on the comprehensive plan. And really, I just wanted to come up and say that, um, obviously a big supporter of this, but Elevate Omaha is a youth-driven nonprofit. And so everything that we do is driven by the young people in Omaha. And so being a part of this comprehensive plan, I just wanted the city council members to know that young people are, really are being centered and that's something that we appreciate at Elevate, but wanted to also be up here to, um, answer any questions, but also make sure that, um, that is kind of flagged as something that is very, um, important and that we really appreciate.
Louis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewer Avenue. Uh, I, uh, support this public engagement piece because mainly it's coming before the council. And I think you can, uh, track the development of the comprehensive, uh, plan. So for me, it's not about, uh, where we're going, it's how we're getting there. And, uh, I, I would like to see more things regarding the comprehensive plan, come before the council so you guys are aware of the developments and not simply receive, receive info, uh, an information dump, um, which is frustrating, no matter who you are. Uh, public engagement is very important and I think, uh, it's overpriced, though. The five hundred thousand dollars, it's overpriced. Some, uh, the folks here are getting paid a hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour. Um, I think you can go, uh, lower than that because what you're doing is talking to people. Basically, they're, they're your agents. This is stuff that you should be doing, um, to develop a comprehensive plan or to be informed about what your citizens, the people that you represent, want in replacing the master plan with a comprehensive plan. Uh, so that's, you know, some critique, but the biggest thing that I like about this is that it's a, uh, a point where you can say, this is where we're at and that's why the, uh, this agreement is, is coming forward to the council. So that, that's a positive. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Uh, Scott, I might just have, have a question with you, uh, real quick. Um, I think this is important. Um, I go back with Omaha by Design, you know, two thousand and five or so, uh, with your predecessor who was, uh, engaged with the city to do urban design principles. And that was a very intensive process and, uh, public engagement challenge that I think you'll have with us, too. But having that context, I know you, uh, are aware of that in our discussions and, um, the way you're describing the public process, I think is great and especially with your partners. And I encourage you not to, not to underengage in any, any way, shape, or form because you can't do that with something like this. This is a really important document, uh, to engage the public on. And I'm encouraged in, in the respect of your partners and also the young people. Uh, Elevate Omaha is important too, uh, because when you talk about a document that's going to impact the next twenty years, that's who we're talking about. Uh, so I really want to see them involved, too. Um, what I didn't, what I didn't ask you, but I think I heard correctly just now, was the five hundred and forty-two thousand, that, that is the total cost, um, but we're just hopeful that, that could be offset with private donations? Is that what was expressed just now?
Correct. And you may want to take that?
Yeah.
But thank you for your notes, uh, councilman, and, and we, we agree that the, if I may just say one thing about the, the scope of the engagement, it does have to be robust. I mean, we are talking literally hundreds and hundreds of touchpoints. And in each case, uh, we have to think about thoughtful means and how to facilitate that, how to really open up and invite, uh, engagement to go where the citizens are. And then as, you know, youth, of course, as well. And then all that has to be somehow, uh, distilled and it has to be recorded and it has to be analyzed and brought in in a way that ultimately then informs the plan so that when that comes back out, uh, it is reflective of what we heard from the community. So, thank you.
Yep. Derek?
Yeah, so the, the answer to your question, yes, that, that five forty-two number could, could come down. Uh, we're hearing, we have, we're, we're hearing good feedback from the foundations that we have applied to. We won't hear for a little bit on that, but, um, so that number, um, that the, the city is putting out there could come down, for sure.
Okay, good. And I did ask Scott this question, but I haven't asked you this question or maybe this observation. Um, we have an awful lot of plans at the city level right now. Um, this is a master plan, so I want to make sure that when we're, we're doing this master plan, we're also keeping in mind the other work we have going on when we talk about climate action plans and bike and pedestrian plans and Vision Zero plans, that'll all be included in these thoughts, right?
Yes. And we've been joking lately, maybe just me, but we've been doing a lot of planning work, a lot of planning work.
Affordable housing plans.
Yeah, the, the AMP, the Active Mobility Plan, the Climate Action Plan, um, HAP and everything else. But all those plans, and that's part of this first phase, which we'll finally get into, even, the other joke we make in, in the planning departments, we've been planning to plan to plan. We're kind of tired of doing that. So we're going to, basically, that first phase of, um, besides the engagement, is to look at all those plans, the, the policies and, um, everything that came with those plans. And those will be inputted into this, into this new comprehensive plan.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I know Scott wasn't there in two thousand and five, but do you remember what the main focus of Omaha by Design was? And I think it was on the cover of the report in two thousand and five?
Um, there was a term I'm thinking of, uh...
The, the rend ring that was on there. Do you know what it was?
I don't recall the rendering.
I believe it was crossroads.
Why, why'd you have to go and do that?
Okay, there's no further lights. Um, thank you for your testimony and we'll see you next week. Adam Clark?
Non-action items, items forty-eight through seventy-eight do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Sir, motion to adjourn.
Now, mentioned it.
Motion in a second. Real call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at four forty-five.